The city of the West Sacramento City Council and West Sacramento Redevelopment Successor Agency and West Sacramento Finance and Authority, March second, March, sorry, sixteenth agenda. And we will proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Scouts BCA Troop eighty-three G based in Clarksburg, serving families in Yolo County, West Sacramento, Sacramento, and the North Delta. And Madam Clerk, can you open up their lines so they can lead us in a Pledge of Allegiance?
Recording in progress.
Betty, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you so much. And, um, City Attorney, do you, um, can you please provide the closed session report? Okay, I don't think the City Attorney is on.
He, I thought I had sent him over, he should be joining us.
Oh, there he is. All right, there he is.
He promoted.
Oh, you're promoted now, okay, go ahead.
Uh, yes, the council met in closed session for three items. Uh, two, uh, real property matters, one involving Union Pacific Railroad and one involving the city of Sacramento, and one matter involving negotiations with the Peace Officers Association. No reportable action was taken in any of those closed sessions.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, um, you have a opening statement?
Yes, ma'am. The city council meeting will be conducted via teleconference pursuant to Government Code Section five, four, nine, five, three E. The city council adopted Resolution twenty-two thirty-three on February second, two thousand twenty-two, confirming that a statewide emergency continues to exist because of the COVID-nineteen virus pandemic, and that the Yolo County Public Health Officer continues to recommend measures to promote social distancing. Members of the public are asked to watch the meeting on live stream on the city's website or via Wave Table Channel twenty. Public comment may be provided using Zoom or through email by emailing the comment to cityclerk@cityofwestsacramento.org. Public comments sent via email before five-thirty PM will be provided to the city council and posted to the city's website. Public comment given via Zoom is limited to three minutes and can only be made on matters within the city of West Sacramento's jurisdiction. The council cannot take action or deliberate on items that are not on the agenda unless there is an emergency, and the need to take action arose before, after the agenda was posted. If you would like to provide comment, please press the raise hand button or press star nine on your telephone. Speakers will be called on in the order their hands are raised. Please leave your hands raised until you have finished making your comment. When your name is called, the clerk will unmute you and you will be notified when your time is up. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And, uh, next item on the agenda is item one, which are presentations by the public on matters not included on the agenda. Each speaker will have, um, uh, three minutes, um, but we do have a special presentation, so if it goes over, uh, um, to seven-ten, I'm going to cut the time off and open up, um, for the special presentation to come in and then close it back up and, um, bring back to public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have anything in writing or live public comment requests?
We did receive a public comment via email, and I provided those to the city council, and they are posted on the city's website on the same page that the agenda for this meeting is posted on. And we do have two hands raised in the audience this evening. Our first speaker is Melanie. Melanie, would you like to provide your comment?
Yes, I would. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, um, to the council, um, for allowing me to speak on, on behalf of my homeless daughter, um, and others who are suffering from mental illness that are out there wandering the streets. Um, the reason why I came is to kind of briefly talk about my daughter and to also talk about the, um, care court that's being, that's happening right now, um, in the planning stages. Um, my daughter ended up walking away from her business, her cars, and left her son with a friend, never returning for him in spring of twenty-twenty. Um, we were shocked to find out and learn that she had been arrested as a transient. She'd been hospitalized, um, multiple times, um, and she was diagnosed with schizo, uh, schizo-affective bipolar and psychosis after wandering into, um, people's car, in traffic, trying to enter people's cars and such. So, since that time, um, she's been hospitalized nine times, and every time she gets out, she ends up on the streets again. She refuses to take the required meds that she's supposed to have, um, because she thinks that they are lethal injections or that they're poison because of her paranoid, you know, delusions. Um, the crisis teams in West Sac have been awesome in terms of responding as well as, you know, law enforcement. Um, they've definitely made appropriate fifty-one, fifty referrals for her, and she has been treated, again, you know, in acute hospitals. Um, but the problem is when they're not available, which is, you know, many times, um, law enforcement are very aware of my daughter. Um, they, you know, understandably, they cite her, her civil rights. And even though she definitely has been seen, um, in some of these conditions where she's been greatly disabled, um, no appropriate referrals were made. And so, you know, with this governor's care court, I did, um, provide you guys, um, a copy of, of the Q and A and the fact, which I'm sure that you guys are already on top of it. Um, but I've been reaching out to various, um, people in West Sacramento that are not aware of it. Um, the Public Guardians Office, Lori Hawes, is, is definitely on top of it. She said she's following it very closely. So I'm really grateful for that, um, but I was just hoping that in the meantime, if more could be done to help my daughter, I realized, maybe not. I was just hoping, you know, that law enforcement are going to be brought into the planning stages, because they are the ones that are the first responders, and I feel that they're pivotal in all of these referrals and getting these people referred over, you know, to the hospitals with or without a clinician. And so I guess that's what I'm asking, um, is if the council could help me and the Chief of Police, if we could work with the law enforcement officers who have a lot of interaction with my daughter. You know, I have definitely found her on the street that took me a month in October, and when I found her, she was in a really bad condition, and, um, you know, she did come to my house, but she keeps wandering off.
That's three minutes.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
So, to shorten it up, I just would like to be a volunteer and figure out what we can do.
Thank you. Uh, I will close the public comment, but I will be back. Um, to the public comment, I do have a special guest I need to bring up. She, um, needs to get off right away. And, um, we will, um, open up a special agenda item with, uh, council's permission, if that is okay. It is the Caesar Chavez Resolution, and Norma Alcala will be presenting that. Councilmember Norma Alcala, will you be presenting?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, just a second. I'm so sorry. Mayor, um... All right, now seeing the located. Mayor, can I ask you to go ahead and present that?
Thank you very much. Well, we are recognizing, um, Caesar Chavez this month, and today we have, uh, a special guest, Dolores Huerta, um, who knows, you know, from, um, her experience throughout her entire life, just what has happened, and we'd like for her to, um, present and break it, you know, just accept this resolution. We'll, we'll have it mailed to you. Um, and, uh, greatly appreciate your presence here. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you very much. I am so happy to be able to receive this presentation of, uh, memorizing Caesar Chavez, and, and thank you very much for doing this, because, uh, it is so important that people remember the great impact that Caesar Chavez had, not only on farmworkers. Every time I meet a farmer worker anywhere, they always say, "Thank you, thank you, thank you, and thanks, Caesar Chavez, for bringing us the bathrooms in the field that we never had, the drinking water, the unemployment insurance, the rest periods, the right to organize a union, unemployment insurance, and all of the things that we did not have, but mainly the respect that we got from society." And Caesar's work, by the way, has to be measured not only, but, but what he did for farmworkers, but as I travel all over the country, I meet so many people that were affected by Caesar, the, and people that, maybe they were from California originally, but now they're in Ohio, they're in Utah, they're in many, many other states, continuing the social justice work that Caesar fought, you know, that he fought for and that he died for. And so, uh, thank you very much, uh, City Council, uh, for memorizing Caesar with his wonderful, wonderful proclamation, and, uh, and thank you very much also for asking me to receive it. Uh, that is a great honor for me just to be able to, uh, to be acknowledged, uh, in the same, uh, resolution, uh, that you're, uh, actually recognizing Caesar Chavez, and remember his work, and not only for the farmworkers, but the Latino community, but also for all people of color, and also, by the way, to remember what he stood for. He stood for non-violence, he stood for activism, he stood for people, the people power, I might say. So again, muchas gracias, thank you very much, and si se puede, remembering the legacy and continuing the legacy of the work of Caesar Chavez. And I also want to thank, uh, Carlos and Norma Alcala, because I know that they were, if not partially responsible, they continued the work to keep Caesar's message alive. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We are very grateful, um, for all of your hard work and protecting, um, the farmworkers who are working, you know, um, very hard out in the fields, providing food to our table. And so we are so very much grateful for, um, what, what you've done to change the working conditions of the farmworkers out in the fields. So, si se puede.
Puede, thank you.
Thank you, Dolores.
Thank you. All right, we'll bring it back to, um, public comment, we'll reopen public comment, Madam Clerk.
Yes, our next speaker is Rhonda Pope Flores. Ms. Pope Flores?
Hello, thank you for allowing me to, um, speak. Um, wow, um, Dolores Huerta, what an amazing woman. I just want to acknowledge, um, all of her work and, uh, you know, honoring women this month. That is one woman who should be honored. Um, okay, quickly, I wanted to give an update. We did have a, uh, a community meeting, uh, regarding, uh, Bright Park and the pool. It's something that we did on our own. We had about twenty people in attendance, and I just want to point out some of the things that were mentioned. Um, the importance of, of the pool, you know, is for age-friendly. We had some, uh, comments that, that spoke about, um, elders that, that needed, um, those types of amenities. We had, uh, discussions about health and the importance of, um, health and mental health. Um, we had one, uh, woman who has a son who's diabetic, and she was very in favor of, uh, the pool. Uh, we had a number of discussions, I won't go into it. I just also, the other thing I want to mention is that it is really important that you guys, um, work with Parks and Recreation to get the accurate, um, figures for the pool. It was first five million dollars in the budget, and then it jumped up to eight million. And I've reached out, and I will just say that I'm not satisfied, and you guys, as a council, cannot make proper decisions on information that is not accurate and up-to-date. So I would urge that, you know, that, that information gets updated, um, so that you can make the, the correct decisions. Um, you know, if the pool isn't eight million dollars, then, you know, we need to get the right numbers and for the rest of the park and everything else, and, um, and that's it. Thank you very much, and, um, yeah, thank you.
Our next speaker is Maria Grahalva. Ms. Grahalva?
Thank you for this, uh, opportunity to speak. Uh, I actually was very, uh, uh, moved by Melanie's, uh, words, uh, because I have a son that is, uh, schiz, that has schizo-affective disorder, uh, also, but I guess I'm very, uh, lucky because, uh, he's at home and he's not out there, and so I'm very, uh, lucky because I have IHSS, uh, services that support me. And so I wanted her to know that we actually have an opportunity to put a new district attorney that is not going to be criminalizing mental health disorder up in June seventh, and there's going to be diversion programs and, uh, mental health programs, and care court is just going to be actually, um, just a tiny bit and really going to be expanded. And so I wanted to give Melanie a sense of hope that there's, uh, an opportunity out there and to not give up, and that, uh, mental health will not be criminalized under this new district attorney, and that June eighth will be a better day for Yolo County. And so thank you so much for this opportunity to speak. Thank you.
We have no other hands raised, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Um, next is our consent agenda item two through fifteen, and are there any requests, um, to remove an item for questions or a presentation?
Yes, I have two. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I have two, uh, so I'm going to pull thirteen, which is the proclamation recognizing March as Red Cross Month. Um, council, sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Orozco, um, could not be here because she, um, is very ill, um, but asked me to pull and then, uh, sent me a statement that she would like, um, recognize. And then I also wanted to pull number fourteen, proclamation for March Women's History Month, in which we have our scouts who made a, who did our pledge of allegiance and would love to, to recognize them and allow them to say something.
Thank you, and I, I have item number eleven, but we'll go, um, which one would you like to do first? Um, we can go out of sequence, Dr.
Oh, no, we, we can go, we can go in sequence, we can go with eleven first.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
I, um, just if anybody's waiting, I wanted them to get a chance to go first, so...
That is a good point. Thank you. So then let's start with fourteen, with that in mind.
I'll let you go ahead.
You're a professional. Um, so, so, so one, thank you, Chris, for, for contacting me regarding this. It felt like, of course, during Women's History Month, we should recognize the integration of our local scout group from being only boys allowed to having girls being able to join too. Um, one of the things, when I think about these funds and, and recognition, is not only looking back on those who have come before us, but also giving those who are currently with us their flowers. And so not only do I want to recognize you, Chris, but I would be remiss in not recognizing Dolores Huerta, who is an amazing advocate, not only for our agricultural workers, but also for women. And so giving flowers to those individuals while they are still with us is so important. And so with that in mind, Chris, please take it away with your, with your group.
Good evening. Uh, I, along with you, would like to give love and, and, and props up to Dolores. I'm just amazed that I was able to just witness that. It was really, really cool. Um, Madam Mayor, council members, my name's Kathleen Strickly. Um, I'm a West Sacramento, um, resident and, uh, registered voter, and I'm, I'm honored, uh, to be the first Scout Master of Troop eighty-three G. Um, Troop eighty-three serves West Sacramento, Clarksburg, uh, let's see, the North Delta and Yolo County. Um, again, in celebration of Women's History Month and in appreciation of that, um, I'm honored to be, um, part of this historic integration, uh, with females being accepted into, uh, Scouts BSA. And, um, I also have a thirteen-year-old son who, uh, started in Scouts four, five years ago now, and so for me, it's, it's really, uh, kind of exceptionally fun as well, um, that I now get to go along on all the, the fifty-milers and, and things that they get to do, but in, um, an official capacity. Um, with that, uh, Audrey Rucker is one of our, uh, young female scouts, um, and she's, uh, gonna come up and, and present to you as well. Um, the other girls, uh, were planning on being here, but unfortunately, they're at, uh, the King's Game, singing the National Anthem this evening, so it's Audrey that will carry the torch for the group. And, um, we're always looking for more girls to come and join, so, um, Troop eighty-three's a wonderful spot out there in Clarksburg with its own cabin, celebrating ninety-five years coming up. So, um, I'll bring Audrey up. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Hi.
Hi.
Um, hi, I'm Audrey Rucker. I am thirteen years old and am part of Troop eighty-three in Clarksburg, California. I'm one of the four girls that are Scouts in my troop. I'm glad that I have the opportunity to partake in Scouts alongside other girls. I'm happy that after ninety-five years of this troop being around, girls are finally accepted to join. It's also nice that I get to have a choice whether I want to be in Scouts or not. Few years ago, I did not have the chance. I thought the decision was made for me because girls were not allowed to be in Scouts. Now I get to have the choice and the chance to be in Scouts. I think that it is good girls are allowed to be in Scouts because it gets rid of some gender stereotypes. It also allows girls to have the experiences, privileges, and knowledge that comes with Scouts. For example, I have learned the twelve Scout laws that every Scout must learn and live by, such as being brave, trustworthy, and loyal. Also, I have learned the Scout motto, "Be prepared." These skills help people in Scouts become the best versions of themselves. I'm glad that I get to be part of this change for the bettering of our community. Um, that's it.
Audrey, thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Wyatt Elliott. I'm currently the senior patrol leader of Troop eighty-three, and this is my Eagle Scout project as well as my high school senior project. A few years ago, when I heard that they'd be, uh, merging girls into Boy Scouts, I was personally against it. I thought that it was a boys-only club, the whole girls have cooties thing, and all of that. However, I got to be in Scouts and I enjoyed it, and then my, all my little brothers got to be in Scouts, as well as Audrey's older brother, and then came time for her to join, and I realized that my views had to change. And what a better way to help my views change than to take on the challenge of not only teaching Audrey's group, but to also, and helping completely integrate and diversify the troop with the other girls along with Audrey. With that, the, uh, been fun. I've got to teach them many of the things that I loved to learn when I was younger, and I feel like that this opportunity is feeling beneficial to the community with them learning all the same things that I got to learn. It's a privilege to be able to stand here and talk to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Wyatt. So the, the last thing that I, I would want to say on this is, um, thank you, Kathleen, thank you, Wyatt, thank you, Audrey. Um, as a troop leader myself, I know the commitment and investment that you make, not only in these children, but also how much our children and youth benefit from learning this, and so it's amazing that we now have girls being treated the same and being able to have the same opportunities to learn, just like our boys do. So thank you for that. Should I go into Red Cross now?
Yes, please, go ahead. I was waiting till it was done, I didn't know.
You're good. You were totally good.
Councilmember, Councilmember Early?
Yes.
I'm sorry, but, uh, Patricia Davis is here from the Red Cross for this proclamation.
Perfect. Um, so, Patricia Davis, I, um, I think first I will read, uh, Pro Tem, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, um, Orozco's, uh, statement. Um, again, she really regrets not being here, and then I will turn it over to you. So, exactly from Mayor Pro Tem, "I regret missing the opportunity to present such a meaningful recognition tonight, the Red Cross. An organization with a mission to prevent and alleviate human suffering, protect life and health, and to ensure respect for all human beings. Our local Red Cross has made a difference during COVID-nineteen and always helps West Sacramento communities through emergencies, including shelter, and those displaced by fire, organizing blood drives, and providing volunteers for COVID testing and vaccination clinics. The benefits and comfort the Red Cross has provided to our residents is immeasurable. In the many years I have served on the council, this proclamation has been presented by my former colleague, Councilmember Beverly Sandine, and approved unanimously, unanimously amongst our council. While I'm unable to stand in to carry on the tradition of recognizing, uh, the Red Cross tonight, I am confident my colleagues mirror the sentiment of appreciation for the great work of this important organization. As President and CEO of United Way, California Capital Region, I too thank you so much for your partnership and also the dedication of Red Cross to our communities. Please take it away." Oh, Patricia, you're on mute.
Uh, first of all, good evening. I have to say that this is a extraordinary opportunity for me to be on the same panel with Dolores, and it's also rather humbling, so I will be brief, I promise you, uh, and thank you for this opportunity. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Supervisors. On behalf of our Chief Executive, Gary Strong, our staff and volunteers, thank you sincerely for this acknowledgement of our efforts as captured in the proclamation. It's, it's difficult to realize that all of these efforts, as well as your own, were carried out for two years under the cloud of COVID and its variants. We want you to know that throughout this time, our disaster workforce, ninety percent of whom are trained volunteers, carried out our mission without fail, and that encompassed epical wildfires throughout our California Gold Country. Key Red Cross staff and volunteers live here, are a part of your community, West Sacramento. Thank you for seeing to their safety throughout this time and the general public during this, this challenging period. We are very honored to be your partners through whatever comes next and grateful for your appreciation as expressed tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I think I'm done.
Alrighty, thank you so much. Thank you, thank you to all of our guests who are here today, um, just bringing this to, you know, a reality of what the wonderful changes that are happening in West Sacramento, um, and also your contributions, um, as, as a community organization to making it a healthier, um, and, uh, just conscientious of what we can do to provide additional support to our, uh, community, so thank you so much. Um, and I wanted to, um, ask on item number eleven, um, I think, uh, Mr. Robinson is, um, the one on this item. I, great, first of all, thank you so much, um, for this opportunity to, um, you know, get this, get this approved, um, you know, for thirteen thousand dollars to fund the purchase of internet-enabled devices, um, for use at the community center, and, uh, I think it's greatly needed, especially now that we've learned, um, that, you know, uh, with COVID, um, medical appointments are now done, um, online, and, um, some, you know, just being able to, um, safely order, you know, groceries or, you know, to get, you know, purchase items online so that, you know, reduces the spread of COVID for almost vulnerable residents. Um, what, what are we going to do for, um, community outreach to make, to make them aware of, um, of this opportunity?
Oh, we're gonna use, we're gonna use a number of different tools. There are, there are, um, we have direct, direct mail, we're gonna use, uh, the contacts for people that are already using the community centers, so kind of word of mouth to people that are already participating there. Uh, we've contemplated some door hangers, that's, that's part of the, um, part of the budget for the grant would be used for kind of a analog outreach effort, because sort of by definition, you're not gonna reach the people you need to reach online for a program like this.
Okay, that's very helpful, thank you so much. Um, and, uh, there is, I don't know if there's anybody, um, interested in speaking on this item, um, so I didn't, so I'm gonna, at this time now, open it up for public comment on all of between two through fifteen, if there are any requests to speak on these, on this, um, consent agenda items, Madam Clerk.
Anyone would like to make a public comment on any of the consent agenda items, please raise your hand at this time. We have one hand raised. Michelle Townsend, you'd like to provide your comment?
I, I just want to, um, extend our services of the paper as far as getting the word out.
For item number eleven?
For item, I didn't write down the number.
Oh, okay.
For the, for the, um, um, internet and...
Thank you, thank you, thank you so much, Michelle, I appreciate that.
Sure.
We have no other hands raised, Madam Mayor.
All right, with that, I'll accept a motion to approve the consent agenda item.
So moved.
Councilmember moved and, um, Councilmember...
That's what got me.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala?
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye, all right, these are all approved, and, um, next, and I just want to add one thing, thank you... Aye, all right. These are all approved and um next, and I just want to add one thing. Thank you for um, Councilmember Early. It was kind of, I wasn't sure whether um Mayor Pro Tim Orozco was going to be on tonight, but she's not. So I'm just gonna um mark her as absent um for the record, Madam Clerk. Um, next we will move to item sixteen on our time set agenda under the city manager's offices. Um, the city, uh, the public hearing on the initial draft maps related to the city's transition to district-based elections and our deputy city manager, John Robinson, um is accompanied by Joe Armenta um regarding this item. So John, take it or John, if Joe, whoever's first wants to.
Yes, I'll just, I'll have just a brief comment and I'll I'll let Joe take it. Um, this obviously is another in the series of ongoing meetings that we're having with the council and the community to facilitate the city's transition from an at-large election system to district-based elections. Just um sort of by way of framing, you know, this this meeting is notable because it is the first time that you've had draft maps to look at. These are the maps that were released to the public last week in accordance with the election code. So this is your first opportunity to talk publicly about these. And I just, I wanted to be clear, guys, it's in the staff report as well, but you know, these maps are not, uh, at this point, they're not recommended maps. They're not preferred maps. They're just a starting point for your discussion. So it's an opportunity for the council to look at the characteristics of, you know, three different legally compliant maps along with several of the maps that have been presented by community members and begin to talk and think about the characteristics of the districts that you would like to see. And then our consultant can use that, you know, to refine additional draft maps that can be presented to the council at later meetings. And so ultimately working towards, you know, a final map that the council can approve in, you know, mid-May by our deadline. So that's that's the intent. Uh, the same thing goes for the sequencing of elections that we've noted in the staff report. That is definitely not a specific recommendation, but that is also intended as a starting point to facilitate the council's consideration of which districts would go first in terms of their election cycles and where we're how that would work. So with that comment, I'll turn it over to Joe for his presentation.
Great, thank you, John. And uh, hello, everybody. My name is Joe Armenta. I'm a redistricting manager at Redistricting Partners. We're a firm that helps uh many municipalities across the country with the redistricting and districting process. Um, and today I have a presentation that's just going to cover the draft maps that we have come up with uh based on the community feedback that we received so far. Um, so I'm gonna share my screen. There we go. And y'all can see my screen, right? The presentation. Great. Um, so uh just things we're gonna cover today are, we're just gonna provide a brief overview of the Fair Maps Act um and the criteria for how we're drawing these districts. And then we'll just dive right into the draft maps along with talking about next steps. Um, additionally, we have received many public submissions as well, and I will display those and just walk through each one. Um, and then I will turn it over to the council to take it away from there. Um, just to note too, this is our third hearing on the matter. Um, if any member of the public would like more information, I would encourage them to view our prior hearings on this where we went into details on why this is happening and and more uh took a deep dive into the Fair Maps Act and the California Voting Rights Act. Um, additionally though, we we do have two more in-person public workshops coming up where we will take more community input, but we will also go over uh many of the principles that we discussed in prior meetings. Um, so with that, uh, just a quick reminder of the California Fair Maps Act, when we are, these are the rules that we are using when we're drawing these uh district boundaries. And uh, one is that the districts need to be relatively equal size. So we're talking um in four districts in the city of West Sacramento, they need to be around uh thirteen thousand five hundred and twelve people, I believe. That's the ideal size. Uh, but we do get a little wiggle room uh in it. The basically the biggest district can't be ten percent bigger than the smallest district. So basically, we're we're working within that ten percent range around thirteen thousand five hundred people. Um, the districts also need to be contiguous uh both in appearance and in functionality. So every part of the district needs to be connected somehow to the other parts of the district. Uh, they need to maintain communities of interest, and we've talked about this a lot. And again, part of our public workshops, we go over what communities of interest are. Uh, but basically, the these are um the public telling us like-minded uh areas and parts of town that we should take into consideration when we're drawing the district boundaries and 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 um and 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 making decisions on uh where a district starts and where a district stops. And the the district should follow city and and census designated place boundaries. Uh, but things like neighborhoods and school districts are things that we all try to keep into uh take into consideration when we're drawing these maps. And the districts also should be uh compact, both um in appearance and function as well. Uh, basically, we're not drawing big squiggly lines all over the place. Um, uh, and at this point, again, we've held two uh workshops with the public. And basically, we are taking input um as it comes in. We've also received online um submissions, and then we have this uh Districter tool available um which people can draw their communities and make recommendations to us on how they want the districts to be drawn. Uh, we take that all into consideration and then uh we, our expertise here is just to help map it out. Um, at the end of the day, though, the city council is going to be the ones that make the decision. Our job is just to um basically put this on paper and uh uh use our technical tools to to uh help guide the city through this process. Um, we will be, these draft maps I will be presenting today are just drafts as well. Um, we don't have a preference over anyone. We don't think anyone is better than than another one. Uh, we leave those decisions to the city council and to get feedback from the community as well. Again, we will hold two more public workshops to get feedback from members of the public on how they they think this should be drawn. Um, and then just in terms of the last two meetings that we've had, um, I won't go into detail because we already covered this at our last city council meeting, but uh, we we received a lot of feedback about the northern part of the city, about feeling uh underrepresented there, about protecting low propensity voters and taking that into consideration. Also, we received feedback about from the uh from members of kind of the central part of the city about keeping Stonegate um that neighborhood intact. And then uh we received online submissions uh from folks talking about the Bridgeway area and then the Iron Works community um and and doing our best to keep those areas whole. Um, but we've also uh received several draft maps from the public at this point, which is great. Um, we have a tool available, and again, we've shown this in our our uh public workshops on how to use this, and we will continue to show this. Uh, but this is a a tool that people can go online and actually draw out their community or draw out how they think the districts should look like and submit it online. And then if you actually go to uh this website, districtor.org/events/westacramento, uh, you can see all the public submissions. Uh, every morning I go on, I look at them, I uh take them off Districter and then I run them through our program as well that makes all these maps. And then we send it over to the city and it's actually displayed on the city's website is you will see um what we call atlases of our maps, where these are basically packets that have an overview of everything and provide the demographic breakdown as well. Um, so these are, as they come in, they are um processed and then sent over to the city to be displayed on the city's website. Um, which is available right here at this link. You can also find it just by going to the city's uh main webpage. I think the first link is the link to the redistricting site. Um, so we will continually update these as as public submissions come in. Uh, we take them into consideration when we're uh drawing some draft maps, uh when we're producing our draft maps. But additionally, um, I'm sure the the council will also take them into consideration and may decide even to work off um if they prefer that that version of the map. Um, so uh, I'm just gonna drive right into the public maps. Again, these are um what we did with these maps are is take what we heard from the public and the information that we've gotten so far and uh draw in three different versions of um of of uh of a districted system essentially. And these are, again, these aren't meant to uh showcase that one set is better than the other. It's just more to display three different ways that this could look like in order to get feedback both from the public and also from uh the council. So I will dive into it. Uh, one thing, this is just the city of West Sacramento's boundaries. I'm sure most of y'all are familiar with it, but um uh we are working within these boundaries. Uh, included in the packet, um again, this is for our draft maps, but also for the public maps that we get is a page that looks like this. Um, it will lay out kind of the district by district demographics of um of each district. And then it will tell us to, a big important thing is that deviation, because remember, we need these districts to be relatively equal size within ten percent. Um, so I'm gonna be pointing out this number a lot, especially as we go through um the public submissions that we've received. And then also uh included in each of these packets is it goes district by district. It highlights the area. Um, and then it gives you a little demographic breakdown and some information that might be useful to you when you're making some of these decisions. So with that, uh, we will start with draft map A. And uh, the way this is gonna go is I'm gonna talk about kind of the the reasons for going into for for the decisions that we made for each draft map. Then I'll provide you with an overview of of the plan. I'll kind of point some things out on it. And then uh we'll look at the 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 kind of demographic numbers and really be highlighting that deviation right there. Um, and then I'll go through each of the three draft maps. I'll present the public draft maps. And then if the council has any questions, uh, feel free to direct them towards me. I'm happy to go district by district through any plan that you want to highlight. Uh, we also have web maps available that we can pull up and like zoom into specific streets um and things like that. So um, uh, we, I I'm happy to address those uh towards the end. Um, but draft map A is uh, we received a public submission from Matthew Hardgrove. He has attended many of our our public hearings. He's been a great resource for um uh working on on some of the neighborhood boundaries. The city of West Sacramento doesn't have official uh uh city-sponsored boundaries. And so Matthew kind of took it upon himself uh to uh craft what what he believed uh was the district boundaries and kind of overlay it with what the the census provides us in terms of um uh community block information, which is what we use to build these districts. Um, and so we took that into consideration when when drawing these ones. Again, these are not officially recognized boundaries. These are kind of Matthew's interpretation. He has a very long rationale for it. I think he went into the history books and looked at tax assessments and things like that. Um, super cool, like map nerdy stuff, but um uh uh we took that into consideration uh when we're uh when we designed this map. And then we actually, you'll see in your packet, we overlaid those those neighborhoods um uh for each of the districts. And you can kind of uh gives you a sense of the idea of what what neighborhoods exist out there. But anyway, we took that into consideration. Um, we created a northern district with Broderick, uh Bright, and and the Glide Neighborhood slash Tree Streets, however you want to refer to it as. Uh, so that was one district in the north. We created a north-central district that crossed the channel into Arlington Oaks. One thing that you will notice in all these maps that we will be looking at and really what will eventually come as the the final map is the southern part of the city across from the channel doesn't have enough people in it to just contain two full districts by itself. And so it has to cross into the northern part of the city at some point or at multiple points. It could cross over once, it could cross over twice, it could cross over three times. Um, but it does, there does have to be some connection between the north and the south uh just to balance population. And so that's a decision that uh the council will have to make is where that cross happens and um and uh where what streets basically it uses to facilitate that. Um, it also has the central district, kind of a a, I would say, a west-central district uh that includes a big chunk of the port, but also includes uh neighborhoods in the southern parts of the city. And then it has a southern district that kept Stonegate whole um and kind of went south along the rural parts of the city all the way to um uh uh the Bridgeway Island, that should be uh Bridgeway. Island, uh, yeah, Bridgeway Island area. The only area that is uh split to is Bridgeway Island. Um, but again, so this is what it looks like. Uh, these are following uh Mr. Hargrove's uh neighborhood boundaries. So that's kind of why you have a carve-out up here. Um, the cross in this one, it crosses over in two different districts. So you can see uh what that looks like. Um, so this one, again, this district contains the port. This one crosses over and just takes uh this neighborhood Arlington Oaks um and then puts it into um a district kind of in the north-central. And then you have a southern kind of rural uh district that goes from Stonegate, includes a lot of the development projects that are coming up. This is the overlay with kind of the neighborhood boundaries. Uh, this doesn't have the titles on it, but if you actually look at your packet, when it zooms into each district, you can actually see the 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 neighborhood names. Uh, when we put it on a on a full map like this, they they kind of overlap with each other and it gets a little messy. It's hard to read. Uh, but this is the the colors here are us drawing around the neighborhood bound, as you can kind of see um up in this area. Um, so that's it. That's draft map A. Um, when we're looking at, yeah, when we're looking at the the demographic kind of report here, again, a big number that we're looking at is the deviation between the the biggest and the smallest district. That needs to be below ten percent. So we're at four point five percent in this map. Uh, so we are well below it. And uh, these are just the citizen voting age population. That is the people above eighteen and who are citizens basically eligible to vote. This is, this goes, uh, a lot of this information is important for federal Voting Rights Act issues. Uh, we don't believe that it is possible to create a majority uh minority district in terms of one specific minority group uh in the city of West Sacramento. So um, we we won't have to work around that too much. Um, yeah, so that's draft map A. And and again, I can, I'm happy to go back and kind of zoom in and answer questions after the presentation. Um, draft map B uh uh uses kind of more of the train tracks and and creates more of a a solid line across the north for for the um for the northern district. Um, it puts the port in in the north-central district and kind of unites uh neighborhoods in the in the northern part um together with the port. Uh, and draft in uh District C in this one, you'll see um the crosses on the eastern side of the city, kind of along the river. And it takes in uh a neighborhood on that uh kind of north, I guess, uh that that's central part uh north of the channel. Um, I I believe it crosses Jefferson, uh uh Jefferson right there. That's what what he uses crosses over. But then it creates a district that's south of the port, basically, um and has uh communities like uh Linden and um uh Bridgeway Island together in one district. And just to see what I'm talking about here, again, you can see in the north, uh, this is kind of how we drew the district. Um, the the dividing point right here would be uh uh the the bridge that this is the I Street Bridge. So this would be the Capitol Bridge right here. And then uh you have the port in the central part of the district. These neighborhoods are united. Um, and it includes this kind of area, which at this point doesn't have anyone, uh, many people living in it because it's being developed. Um, and then as I was saying, the cross from the south happens kind of in this area right here. Um, this is the main road that that it uses to connect the districts. And then you have a district in the the southern part that unites many of these neighborhoods over here. And when we click over, uh, basically, this is a this is what it looks like with, again, Mr. Hargrove's uh neighborhoods that that he created in our in our tool. Such as B. Uh, when we look at the population numbers, this is what it looks like. And then again, the the important thing is that deviation, uh keeping it under ten percent. We are at six point eight percent of this map. So draft map C, um, this one is a a map that it, we're keeping Bright and um Broderick together, but we take out kind of that rivers part and we draw it along the river um and and District D, I'm sorry, District B in in this map. And District B then can, the rivers uh area gets connected to many of the neighborhoods in the central part of the city. And so we, that's how we we um uh built kind of the north northern districts. Uh, this uh District C uh is basically the port. And then it goes down to uh uh this Linden Circle and then includes the Stonegate community. Uh, so Stonegate is with the port in this one. Um, sorry, I should point this out on the bigger map, but it uh that's um, that would be the central district. And then the the southern district keeps both uh Bridgway Is- Island and the kind of broader Bridgway community uh together in one district and then a big chunk of the rural part of the city um together as well. So again, I'll take a look at this and um uh as you can see here, this is kind of the Rivers Project. It goes down and connects with, it follows the river and then connects uh the the central part of the city. Um, it stops at the channel. The way, the part where uh this district crosses over is kind of in the port area. And then it grabs neighborhoods up around here. I guess that would be around IKEA. Um, uh, it grabs those neighborhoods and puts it kind of down with neighborhoods in the southern part of the city. And then you get a southern district. And then you get a southern district that kind of makes a U shape, but it connects all of these neighborhoods along this area with some of the new developments around here. And then if we look at the neighborhood lines, this is what it looks like. This is the demographic information. I was here. But again, that the the important thing is that deviation and we're at 7.6% deviation in this one. So we are within the 10% range. So just to look at all three maps again, I feel like, again, this is, this is like when you go to the optometrist's office, but you can kind of see the lines move on this one. So this is draft map A. Draft map B. Draft map C. So three kind of very different plans here. Again, these are draft plans. We were, we're, we built these based on what we heard, but we're looking forward to hearing what the council here, what feels about these and then also what members of the community do as well. And then what's next in this process? Actually, I'll go into the the public draft maps in a second, but just what's next again is to for the council to provide us with revisions to these draft maps, but also to hear from the public and to provide direction to us. Just to look at the schedule ahead, we're at, we are at March 16th right now. We have two post draft map hearings coming up. That'll be a March 26th. These will be in person ones and then March 29th as well. We'll have a meeting then. And then we have several more city council meetings. I think we added one just beyond the agenda for it on April 6th. This is just to review the draft maps and to get additional feedback from from the council. So with that, I'm going to go into the public maps. Just one second. Let me pull them up here. And drag them over. So one thing to note is that every public map basically that we've received so far was generated in District R. This is the online tool again. Whenever you save a map in District R and and put it and you're ready to publish it on the website, it gets one published on the website, but then you get a unique ID with it. And so this this number right here, and I'll read it off, is the number that you can use to refer to the map. We will get, we have distributed what we call placemap, but these are paper maps that people can actually fill out and trace central districts. We have distributed those to the library and as those come in, we'll have a naming convention for those as well, so people can refer to it. But again, these are the maps that have been submitted by the public so far. This is draft map 117116. This is what it looks like. Kind of looks a lot like our draft map C, I believe, with the how the south is built and then the north kind of is is configured this way. So just give you a second to look at it. And then we'll look at the the table again, mostly what I'm going to review in this one is whether or not it makes that 10%. This one does. It's about a, what's 5.6%? So it's under this 10% deviation. And again, these are all available online. People can go look at this and and the council can always go back and refer to it by visiting the website. So overview. And then demographic. Next map submission is 117119. Looks pretty similar. I would say this area is different in this map right here. The north is pretty much the same. This map is over the population deviation at 11.9%. So this is over the 10, the allowable 10% deviation. Next map we have is 117121. This map kind of splits the northern area like this up in the north. And then it it kind of keeps the southern configuration that we have in draft map C. But this one, I guess it would split Broderick from Bright. And this map, we are at 5% deviation, so under the 10%.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a quick question? Is it technical?
Sorry, I'm muted. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, so hi, Joe. Thanks for the real quick thing. But on the, on these maps, which the public is doing, so there's no, kind of vocalize or articulate this question. So they can draw the map and the standard deviation percentage or result, there's no, they could point whatever it wants. It could be outside the deviation, inside the deviation, there's no like checkpoint to say you're over or under to kind of help redraw for the community, right? So these could be, yeah, okay.
That is correct. And again,
I haven't had a chance to look at it yet, but I did, I looked at it, but I just haven't realized that.
Yeah, with a lot of these maps submitted by the public, that's kind of the the biggest issue that comes up is within the deviation. But again, it doesn't mean that we can't work off this too. We could always, if you like the kind of configuration of it, one, we can go back and try to balance the population.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to understand is what we're,
just moving forward though, just as as you're going through, are you, so you outside of the map and what's actually available to the public, you are behind the scenes calculating deviation, the public when they draw their map. I think this is what Councilmember Ladesma was asking, are they actually privy to what their deviation is for the map they created?
Yes, so whenever they draw the map on the districting tool, it has the number.
Okay, so they do have.
They have the bar graph that shows like the population numbers go up. And then there's a line that says the ideal one and then there's a little percentage that says if you're within it or not.
Perfect. And so as you're clicking through, because you're, you're going through a little bit faster, right, on these, on the next one, can you just highlight where it says on that sheet what the deviation is? Because you're just, you're just telling us. It would be nice just to see it on there, too.
Yep, happy to. I don't think I've reviewed this one yet. But again, this is the same, the northern divide is Broderick and and Bright are two different districts. This one has the port going across the channel right here at the main road and then it has a southern district. I think this is what we did in in the original draft map and drop out A's. Kind of down here. And if we look at it, the deviation percentage that I'm looking at is this number right here. It's the third line. And basically, I'm just doing the math in my head. So this one, it would be the biggest district is District Two at 3.2% and the smallest one is negative 3.9%. And then if we do the math really quick, that's 7.1, am I correct? Yeah, 7.1%. So that's under the 10%.
So so there is not one number that you can see that's something you have to add up? And you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to ask this question. You asked the question and and it's not clear, actually.
On our, on the kind of reports that we generate, again, it's, it's not, you you have to do the math in your head. On the actual district or tool, it does math for you. Public is using. Yeah.
Okay.
So, but here it is right here. Yeah, so that was, this is that draft map again. And again, this would be under the 10%.
And before we leave, so that was 3.9 plus 3.2 and it was a negative, I think, 3.9. So you're, and you're just doing the absolute? Is that what it is?
Yeah, again, it's the, yeah, it's the absolute value between those two. Yeah. So that was 117122. This one, we have 117125. This one kind of puts the loop in this district mostly uses, I believe that's Jefferson as the main divide and then has two northern districts. Right there, so 117125. We look at the population, the biggest district is 5.2%, the smallest one is 6.3%. So we'd be at 11.5% deviation on this. So that would be too high. This one, we have 117128. This one, again, has kind of the northern district, just as you, you've seen them. This is where the divide happens in the south. Just kind of eyeballing this, this is going, this district's probably going to be too small, but let's look at it. Actually, no, that one's good. Wait, is that one four? No, so the four district is actually too small. It's at negative 9.2%. And then the biggest district, that's 7%. So this one's at 16.2% deviation, pretty far over the allowable 10%. With our district or tool, people don't have to fill out a full map. So this one is just a single district that someone submitted. So this would be just the northern district. It's, looks like it's containing most of kind of the area north of the rail yards and then it takes in the railroad and then it takes in kind of this, this area down here north of the Capitol Bridge. And this is what it looks like and it's actually almost perfectly balanced, so 0.0. Makes up one full district. Next plan is 117409. This district has a northern district that looks like it follows a road of some sort. I can tell that is this one. But happy to zoom in if you all want to. Has a district that's pretty much most of north of the channel and then it divides the south this way, mostly again along that main road, just hopping over at a couple of places. And then it crosses the river over here and includes some of this area, which I think is going to be new development. This one, the District One is at 9.1% under and then the biggest district is at 8.1% over, so 17.2% deviation in this one. So pretty high above the 10%. The next map we have is 117875. Splits the north kind of in, contains one full district in the north and then has two districts along the sides that cross over into the south and then has one full district in the south. This district is, smallest district is 2.5 and the biggest district is 2% over. So we're at 4.5%. So this would be allowable within that 10% range. Next one we have, and it looks like we have five more maps. We have this one, just to note too, you know, when people submit it, sometimes they'll miss the census box. So we are happy again to go in and and fill in areas if the council would like us to. So that's a little error, but it has kind of two northern districts and two southern districts. Again, just eyeballing it, I can tell one of these districts is going to be a little bit under. And yeah, we have nearly half a district under in District Three. And then the biggest district is almost a full district over. So would have to do a lot of work to this map. Next map we have is 117958. Again, a lot of missing census blocks, but we could, if upon request, we could fill those in. District in the north, kind of a district in in north central. And again, you have this cross right here, connecting the north and the south. And this one, you have District Two, that's 19% over and District One, that's 14.5% under. So a pretty big gap here, 20, or sorry, 33.5%. So this would need a lot of work to balance the population. Next map is 117964. This one has the rivers area kind of connected down to the central part of the city. This includes the port, has Broderick and Bright together, and then it has two southern districts. And this one would be 18.6% over in District Four and minus 8.7% under in District Two, so 27.3% deviation. So again, that would need a lot of work to readjust population to get into the allowable range. Next map we have is 118475. This one has two, a Bright and a Broderick district and then the cross is kind of in the middle part. But again, it's connecting some of the, these neighborhoods over here with with some of the neighborhoods north of the the channel. And then you have kind of a southern district that has Stonegate down south. And this one is almost perfectly balanced, smallest district, the, it's the point zero, I'm sorry, a point 2% deviation, so well within the 10% range. And then our last map that we'll look at is 118905. You have two northern districts kind of split right down the middle in the northern part of the city. You have, looks like this road is being used as the kind of dividing point, but it's creeping over in a few areas and it crosses right here and grabs this neighborhood north of the the canal. And then if we look at the population, we are at, the smallest district is 3, 3% under and the biggest district is 3.8% over, so 6.8% total deviation. Again, these are all available online. You are more than welcome, you and the members of the public are more than welcome to go view these online. They are both available on our district or page and also just via maps like this. And I am happy to take questions now.
Taking questions among council members? Thank you. Councilmember O'Callaghan?
Hi, thank you, Joe. I just had a few questions about the maps who were submitted by the public. And how many individuals of the public actually submitted maps? Because there were quite a few and I wasn't sure if a few people submitted different maps or, do you give me just the number of individuals who actually submitted these maps?
We don't know. You're not required to submit a name alongside the map and so, and you're not limited on how many maps you can submit.
Okay, so one person could have submitted all those maps, right? Yeah.
It's possible.
Could have been Matt Hargrove. I got you.
That wasn't the implication at all. You did great work, though. Just curious. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Early? Um, you know, actually, I'll reserve for after we hear from public comment.
Okay, we'll open it up to public comment. Madam, please check to see if there's any public comment.
If anyone in attendance this evening would like to make comment on this item, please raise your hand at this time. Our first speaker is Andy Domick. Andy, would you like to provide your comment?
I would. Thank you. So I'm actually commenting on behalf of my wife as well. Normally, I wouldn't be allowed to speak on on her behalf, but she's given me permission today. So we reviewed the draft maps, especially in light of our home in the Stonegate community. Map A and Map B, we see that our community is drawn together with Bridgway Lakes and I love you, my friends in Bridgway Lakes, but we have some different needs and interests. We feel it might be more appropriate to be aligned with areas near to the river and the central city as well as kind of the southern, as as it is in that map, the southern area on this side of, on our side of Jefferson. In each of those two maps, the district would be kind of, would be geographically large and it ignores what seems to be a more natural boundary in Jefferson Boulevard. I know in Map B specifically, the largest districts have the most planned development, which would mean those districts would be significantly more populated than others in the future. We also have a couple of concerns with Map C, just that it seems like a more natural boundary again would be utilized Jefferson because we are, we'd be cut off from our neighbors to the south on our current side of Jefferson. I don't want to make it seem like I'm just being a negative Nelly here. There are some maps we feel would better represent the communities. We really liked 117409. I know the deviations were off, so it would need finagling, but it seems like that would be a cool starting point. It seems to keep more communities like ours together and accounts for future growth in areas already planned for development and making those districts on the smaller end now to accommodate future growth later. Thanks for listening.
Our next speaker is Maria Guralva. Ms. Guralva?
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm looking at the numbers and I'm looking at the numbers and demographics and so so far, B is the one that gives us 4240, I think, in the demographics. But as far as the visuals, the independent map, I guess I'm gonna call it, the one ending in 7122. Let me try to jump over there where it gives a Broderick and Bright map that visually appealing, I don't know the numbers, though. That one is visually appealing. And then the next one that it's also visually appealing without knowing the numbers, 7121 is visually appealing because it gives a Broderick and Bright map. So that is visually appealing without knowing the numbers. So for me, living in the north, anything that gets me to Latino neighborhoods is very appealing. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
The next speaker is the West Sacramento Chamber. You should be able to provide your comment now.
Hi, thanks very much. Thank you, Mayor Guerrero and council members. My name is Denise Domke. I'm the CEO of the West Sacramento Chamber and a West Sacramento resident. After an informative presentation by redistricting and city staffed the Chamber's Economic and Government Affairs Forum last Tuesday. Thus far, the three early map alternatives, map C seems to have some favor among the chamber members that have had the opportunity to review the options. Map C keeps the river area together, which will enhance the city's ability to obtain financing for future and continuing projects. Creates two separate districts in the greater Southport area that will include soon to be developed large master plan project. And map C gives the majority of the city's industrial areas, including the port, a common base, while splitting the deep water channel to share the south side of that channel with representation from for residents. West Sacramento's Chamber of Commerce members represent businesses throughout the entire city of West Sacramento. We are partially through our evaluation recommendation process and still have more review ahead. After tonight's public hearings on the initial draft maps, we anticipate significant feedback from our membership. The Chamber appreciates the opportunity to participate this evening and looks forward to continued engagement in the districting and election sequencing process. Thanks very much.
The next speaker is Scott Rafferty. Mr. Rafferty.
I wonder if it's possible to share my screen. Well.
Well. I'm sorry, I, sometimes what we do get is a handout. And I'm not sure what you want to share. It's not like it presented to the public at this point, but.
Well, I, fine, I just drew a map of voter turnout. And as your demographer observed, that's, that's really important because low turnout areas have just as many people with just as many needs, often more needs. And they're entitled to equal concern and I think it's really one of the important factors in protecting those areas so that you don't split the high propensity voters and kind of blend the districts. I think B did a pretty good job on this criteria. But it's, it's something that's important to look at. One reason I did it was that other demographics are coming out tomorrow from the Census Bureau. And you know, it's also important to consider why people are underrepresented. Is it a language issue, often unemployment, crowded housing, things that are barriers to really participating in society? It was, it was a special treat for all of us to see one of my clients this evening. Last week I filed in federal court for the foundation and some of her grandchildren and great grandchildren who are voters in a school district that is allows wealthy neighborhoods to actually elect more trustees than less wealthy neighborhood. And we're trying to encourage the board to have a process like this. And where we all go to the court afterwards and hopefully in agreement. So you set a nice precedent here. But getting back to just the mapping process, I think Mr. Hargrove's neighborhood definitions are really useful. If, if anyone sees neighborhoods differently, I hope they speak up now. But those have had a great influence on how the maps are drawn. And I think a beneficial one. And it would also be useful if people were encouraged at least to identify themselves and they submit a map and maybe say something about it. Because it was a little bit overwhelming to have 16 maps, some of which weren't really population balanced. So if it were possible to group those so that people could, could see which ones were legally compliant and what the various themes were, I think that would be useful. And finally, I, I just want to encourage people to perhaps maybe there's a way to have some dialogue or written comments on the website. So that the people can get a better understanding of what the different maps are trying to do.
That's three minutes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Verna Sopizo.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, good evening. I appreciate the floor. As some would say, there's more than one way to skin a cat and why I have poor the idea of skinning a cat. I know we can agree there are quite a few different ways that these new districts can be drawn. High level things that I really liked and I appreciate all the work that's gone in so far. The entirety of the Rivers neighborhood and the Bridge District in the same district allows for Bright Park to sit in a district outside of the Rivers neighborhood, which could allow for more equitable funding for the park. Boundaries which cross the Barge Canal, which I learned tonight will be necessary based on population. But I especially think that's important as we have the opportunity to create unity in our community and not allow for the continuation of the north versus south divide that the Barge Canal has created in the past. Also, as we redevelop the waterfront of the Barge Canal, having both sides of the river as one district will provide a unified voice. I do have a concern as a resident of Linden Acres, the draft maps proposed, I sit in district C across the board. We're primed for a large residential development of over 1,500 homes. And in 10 years when the redistricting happens, we'll likely be allowed, be above our allowed deviation, you'll need to redraw lines. And based on the election cycle, members of our community will be removed from the ability to vote for their city council member. Since we know this growth is coming, I'd like to see us plan for it as much as possible and reduce the size of the district where needed to allocate for the future growth and avoid disenfranchising voters when we have to redraw lines in 10 years. And then finally, if, as we continue to go through this draft map process, if we continue to use the letters A, B, and C for draft maps, could we change the name of the districts within those maps to 1, 2, 3, and 4? As I've been talking with neighbors and discussing maps, we're finding it quite confusing, differentiating between the different districts in the different maps when they're all labeled with letters. Thank you very much for your time.
We have no other hands raised, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, for closing the public comment, bringing it back to.
Mr. Hargrove just raised his hand. Would you like to take his comment?
Well, yes, of course, we have to take Mr. Hargrove's comment.
Mr. Hargrove.
Madam Mayor and council members, thank you very much. I really appreciate the opportunity to play with all these maps. It's been really fun. I, I want to say if you haven't done, been on district R yet, District R yet, you should try it. It really will open up different thoughts about how these districts are drawn when you're actually able to click on the differences, this blocks and make these. And it's, and it's fairly simple. But also I, I put out an offer and I've actually met with a few people to help them draw maps over Zoom and would, would be willing to do that with anyone listening. If you want to try and draw a map, but you don't are worried about learning the program, I'm happy to help. I've drawn enough maps now that I can do it pretty easily. On the maps that were submitted, if you go to the district R site and you have to click see more maps and you go down to the beginning, I actually submitted multiple maps. I submitted four different maps in terms of the different council districts. And those four different maps were pared down from 12 maps that I originally prepared and took out and met with members of the public about, talked about pros and cons of them. But ultimately, the four maps that I put up there, I wanted to put up there because they were four different types of scenarios that could be looked at for different ways to doing this. Two of them are kind of quadrant based map and two of them are lateral maps. So that is, my maps are the ones that they all start with 4D on them, meaning four districts. Because in the beginning, we were also looking at five districts. So those first four maps, all that have 4D on them are the ones that I submitted. And you open those up and you can play with them and change them. I also submitted the map of just Broderick, Bright, and Washington. Somebody asked for help doing that. So that one map where it only shows those neighborhoods together, that is something I did to help somebody else out with this. But I think it's also, it's just a nice map to look at to see what the numbers look like when you, when you put those together. I'm not making a comment as to whether or not, I think politically that is the best way to go. And I think you can argue it either way. But I wanted to make sure you knew that that was out there. And then for those of you who look at the neighborhood maps, I had to submit a northern version and a southern version of them, just because I ran out of colors to use for the two maps. I did, under each neighborhood, explain what the neighborhood is, kind of the boundaries. But I also want folks to know if some of the neighborhood look funky to you, that is because in district R, you have to draw the maps using census blocks. And not all census blocks are created the same. Some are really long and squirrely and wiggly, others are little tiny squares. So what I tried to do was use the best, to my ability, use the census blocks that were available to me to map out some of the city's neighborhoods, but they're not all perfect and you can.
That's three minutes.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. We have no other hands raised, Madam Mayor.
All right, wrapping up the public comments, closing and bringing it back to council. And council member Early.
I just had a couple of questions. On the first, for Joe, do we take into account the number of residents that are planned to be in these different districts? So for instance, in the rivers right now, we have a residents going up right now, right? They're literally being built. So do we take those numbers into account? Can we take those numbers into account?
So when balancing the district population, we have to use the US Census numbers as counted in 2020. Ultimately, the future develop will be, development will be addressed in the 2020, 2030 census, and that's when you redistrict everything. But what you can do is you can intentionally kind of underpopulated district as long as it, as it's within that 10%, right? There are, you know, in a way, trade offs to that, right? If you make a district 9.99% underpopulated, that means you have less wiggle room in the other three districts. And you might have to split neighborhoods or make some, you know, decisions based on that. But you know, you can, you know, development is considered a community of interest as well and you can take that into consideration. If we kind of know where those planned communities are going to be. But again, to an extent, we're using the 2020 census at the end of the day.
That's, that's really helpful. So the way you could take development, if you were going to, not right, that you would have to, is that potentially you could look at development agreements or literally construction that's happening right now and try to potentially factor that in to help correct or potentially some of that, that you know is going to happen in the next year or three years. That's what I'm hearing, but also it all has to be within the deviation and the little bit of math, right? That we just did, the mental math. So that is helpful. And then I think the last question, maybe comment, less question. I, I would agree with some of the comments that we heard, that if possible, we wouldn't, I don't think we would want to trade off having the at large potentially representation in which we have seen Latinos, quite frankly, occupy the majority of our city council, right? And create a situation in which we have just one district and one voice, meaning we, we put Broderick and Bright together. I would just be concerned about that. When if you potentially split those up, you would see a higher representation. And in regards to the Latino voice, you would at least have it occupy more weight in two districts versus one. So I would just want to make that comment. Just as far as all the different maps that we saw, right? Because we saw a lot of different maps. And then I think the other comment that I would make would be regarding some of the neighborhoods that we have put together. I think we heard from some of the public regarding how we have, and again, there's various ways to do this. But I would, I would want to make sure that we are also factoring in that, that we would want representation amongst those who have been impoverished and maybe have been vulnerable in representation that we would take that into account too. And not have one where you have a vulnerable population that has, again, felt like it was silenced paired with, say, a more higher socioeconomic status on population.
The only kind of response I would I have to that is just be careful sometimes when you're referring to some of these splits, because while race can be, race cannot be the predominant factor outside of the VRA for making our decisions, right? So there, it can be a factor, but I would work with your legal counsel and just.
So it is a factor, right? I mean, the whole point of this is actually to ensure that we have appropriate representation amongst these districts, right? So although it is not the predominant, we absolutely should have a conversation.
Right, I would just avoid saying split these neighborhoods solely for Latino representation because it is not possible to create a majority minority.
It's not, it's definitely not possible, but when looking at the demographics, you absolutely could have higher representation amongst Latino population. Are you saying I shouldn't consider that?
No, it's not that you can't consider it, it can't be the only reason that we're splitting.
That sounds good. Yes.
And then one, just before, I'm happy to take more questions, but there were questions on district R and I just want to do a quick demo. We do this on every community workshop, but just so you all are clear on what we're using here. This is our district R page. It's accessible to the public via district R website, but kind of what I was talking about for the ideal population. This is like how you start drawing the district and you notice this bar here, it starts going to this line and that's the ideal population size. And then this percentage down here is the deviation. So the people can see it as they're drawing the districts. And then, you know, that will expand as you're adding more districts as well, right? And so that's kind of how they can see, measure out their districts when they're creating them. Is through this bar graph right here as they're drawing. And then in terms of, you know, there's a, there's a public library available on district R. Again, we put it through our mapping program and publish it on, on the city's website. But if you also go to district R, there's a public mapping. These are all the maps that have been drawn and you can actually click on them. And it'll load it up. But some people leave notes to you and the notes will kind of pop up in the side corner as well. So if people do want to leave notes, they can do it and it's accessible via our district R website.
Thank you, Joe. That, that is very helpful, Joe. Just appreciate you sharing that here. Is there kind of like a, like a little video demo showing people how to do that?
Again, we display it at our workshops, we record those meetings, so I'm sure we could cut it on the website.
Okay. Because that, that was really helpful to me, just to be able to see. It's less intimidating to think of opening up the website and trying to do it. Yes, councilmember Ledesma.
Thanks, I just have a couple of comments first. This is apparently the Matt Hargrove show now, so sorry, Joe, like. But thanks to the community for all the interest and certainly for everybody's early thoughts on this. And this isn't, now an interesting creative exercise where we get the looks at our community, our neighborhoods and start looking at kind of boundaries of where districts may lie. So Joe, just thanks for the thorough explanation and the technical questions. I'm gonna start off with a technical feedback, which I agree with Verna who spoke. I was really, it took me a while to get used to the letter maps and the letter district. So it might be, it might be helpful. Um, I was really, it took me a while to get used to the letter um maps and the letter district, so it might be, it might be helpful so we could refer to. You know, Plan A District Three or something, that, that, that that's possible. That's a convention usually is, I don't want to make you go through more work, but it is a little easier from that perspective. Um, you know, I really don't have uh at this point uh really hard thoughts, although, you know, principally I'm thinking about it in terms of. You know, at a certain point, we've, we've got to make some, some common sense, right? I think that's sort of what I read into some of the rules you laid out in terms of. Or what, 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 you know, population sizes within, you know, ten percent deviation points or. They not have squiggly lines that reach all the way across halfway to the city to make, make a district work. So there is an amount of common sense that I, that, that I have and, and the thing I think about most is. Sort of how the city um lays out on a map. And just looking at it, the geographical and, and um being probably more attracted to sort of the, this, this, the straight kind of quadrant look at the city. So it's, you know, how, how you differentiate it is, is the way that I was in my mind's eye thinking about it and having a chance to look at the. The sample maps over the weekend um a little bit and, and now getting a better explanation of how you read the actual data. Within it, I'm getting a sense of why you actually do have to go reach over and find, you know, a population, a census block that gets it to a deviation point. So I, 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 again, I, I, I think there is a matter of, of sort of, you know. There, there were some really good feedback and some of the maps I saw, I took note of a couple that I'm gonna go back and look at from the public. Um, that sort of had for the quadrant look, but also looked at, uh, somebody mentioned um. The natural road fair uh, uh, uh borders, right? So whether it's Jefferson Boulevard from north to south. Um, or the canal or, or I saw in some cases Marshall Road being the east or west connector or Stock Avenue. So again, it, it, those are kind of natural borders we're used to in our community and um. But I, I, again, I'm, I'm still early into this. I'm, like I said, I, I, I do think that there's opportunity to ensure. Neighborhoods of commonality, I think um are, are there. Um, so I, again, I'm still early in my thinking, but I do hear very much uh community, um, I, I, I just think, you know, I own neighborhood. I get the total stone, Stonegate neighborhood um alignment. Um, and I love my friends in Bridgewater Lakes too, but it's, it's a little bit, um, you know, kind of a, a reach, but. Again, we have some work to do and I think I'm thinking about more so in the quadrant neighborhoods and seeing how we can make it so that. Um, again, just casual voters, especially those that come into the neighbor, come into our community over the next ten years and see it's pretty much how it's driven. So um, just appreciate all the work at this point. I have no really other comments at this.
In terms of the, the numbering and lettering of districts, um, we tend to in our draft maps uh letter our districts just because. Uh, we don't want to give the perception that decisions about sequencing and things like that are happening before, you know, the draft maps are, are finished. Um, uh, but the, the, the issue is district R numbers their districts and so uh it, it is some juggling back and forth. Um, so uh, yeah, that's, that's the reason behind the lettering and numbering.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. It's good to know it's intentional. Um, I, I do have some thoughts um and appreciate the public comment that we received in writing. Um, as it relates to splitting up the rivers, I mean, I, I think in thinking about um establishing boundaries of, of. You know, a common interest, that's an example of, of a boundary that preserves, you know, the, the residential community. If, if it was split, I think um the residents that have something in common and then are in two separate districts. Would lose, I think, uh, the, the representation they feel they would need on council. Uh, not that I, I, I think it would happen. I don't think it would. I'm hoping that council is always thinking about the city as a whole. But I could see how there are concerns being raised if um the rivers was split, for example. And um same thing, you know, I think and, you know, and being around in the Brighton-Broderick area. There is a section of, of the community um that is non Hispanic. Um, and, and I don't know who submitted um the mapping, but I could see those um sections splitting off. And um if, if Brighton-Broderick were united, there would probably be more of a, of a blend of um. Of, of communities of, of different ethnicities in those communities. I think what I find in common is, um, you know, whether it be a housing value or shared um community um resources, whether it be the park. Um, you know, just the, just the situation that's going on in the streets, whether it be, you know, it's an older um street, things like that. Those are some of the things that I think that they could share in common, that they would want to see some representation um on, on behalf of their representative. Um, that appreciate um Andy Domick's comments uh as it relates to um. Have, you know, wanting to be separated from Bridgewater Lakes and trying to figure out how we can map it out so it's evenly divided in that sense. Um, and uh, I, you know, I, I, I get it and um that, that makes sense to me. Um, so just, that's just some quick feedback. Um, like Chris, I'm still early. I have to go in there and, and play with the tools. Um, you know, maybe sit down with John a little bit if, you know, we can, we can go over that a little bit just to see what, what you've learned. And um, you know, appreciate that, you know, there are members of the community taking time to review this and um provide some input. Uh, and, and especially to Matt, I think we need to have, you know, Matt sitting whenever somebody's ready to draw the tools, Matt can give you the historical analysis. Um, and, and every, you know, and anybody interested in sharing, you know, getting, you know, uh, understanding more. We have a lot of new people here in West Sacramento and I, and I um value his historical perspective um in trying to. Um, prepare these maps and uh, you know, drawing them as we look at what's happening in the future. Um, and uh, so the questions by council members, appreciate, you know, your questions and thoughts as well. This is very helpful. Um, so yeah, council member Ledesma, you have your hand up again?
Yeah, just, just a quick question for John and staff. So um, obviously we're, we're starting to dig into these, um, at least I am. Um, this is launch pad, not landing pad of our opinions and how we're forming them. What, is it okay to come back to you or Joe? What's the process there? So if we had questions and uh individual questions, could we, is that okay? Could, or do we, how do we process that?
I think it's best to talk to staff. I think we, we could walk you through the district R software. We can, we can do most of the, most of the stuff. We're trying to, trying to keep the consultant kind of out of individual conversations just to make sure that the, the conversations they do have are all, you know, out in public and.
Okay.
Give everyone comfort.
So John, I'll be setting time with you then. All right, cool. Thank you.
And I also want to add a, a big thank you to whoever's doing the outreach. I hear that um, that there are, you know, um. Hard copies of the, you know, outreach information for the next community engagement meetings that people are, it's reaching out to. So hopefully we'll get some more public participation. Um, but I, I think it's, I think, I think your messaging is getting out there and um I'm appreciative of, of your work on that. I know you guys are all working hard on that, so um it's starting to, you um, starting to look good as far as getting some feedback. Uh, so thank you, everybody, for all your, all your work. I really, I really feel like the community is providing the input that's needed and. Um, understanding why this uh, you know, putting this together is, you know, their involvement is important because. When, what, you know, once it's done, which is about two months away, um, we're gonna, you know, this is it for ten years. And um, we are gonna grow quite a bit, uh, so hopefully we um preserve the community of interest as we move forward to the best, you know, extent we possibly can. So with that, um, there are no other comments or questions? Bring it, um, wrap that up and I don't know if we need anything else at this point. Um, if you need anything else from us, John?
No, that was, that was very helpful and I would definitely, just to last note, I would encourage you all to get on the district R software and I'm happy to walk you through it. I think that is probably the best way to develop like an intuitive feel for how, you know, how this works. And then the trade offs that happen when you change boundaries. So I'd be happy to walk you through that individually.
Thank you, John. I know you're busy, but thank you. We appreciate it. Okay. Okay, next. Um, under our time set agenda is item seventeen, under economic development and housing, and is a public hearing to consider resolution twenty-two dash twenty-one. Adopting amendment number two to the Community Development Block Grant. Twenty twenty annual action plan and our community investment specialist Isaiah Alfred will present on this item.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Uh, my name is Isaiah Alfred. And I am the Community Investment Specialist in the EDH Department. Uh, this evening I'll be presenting information regarding the substantial amendment to the twenty twenty annual action plan. After my presentation, staff requests the council open a public hearing uh to take any comment. And upon closing the public hearing, staff respectfully request the council to vote to approve amendment number two to the CDBG twenty twenty annual action plan. As the council may recall, the city of West Sacramento became an entitlement jurisdiction to receive funding from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development in twenty sixteen. According to HUD regulations, the city must develop a five-year consolidated plan examining the needs of low-income persons and setting goals for the use of CDBG funding. Additionally, each year, the city must develop an annual action plan which consists of activities and actions to address priority needs and goals identified by the consolidated plan. Uh, the twenty twenty annual action plan originally budgeted four hundred and fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars. For the Washington Neighborhood Improvement Project that fulfilled goal number two of the twenty sixteen through twenty twenty consolidated plan. Which was to achieve goals in the HUD Challenge Grant Fund in Washington realize a sustainable community strategy. All CDBG funded activities must comply with National Environmental Policy Act known as NEPA. NEPA requires federal agencies to evaluate the environmental effect of their proposed actions prior to making decisions. The NEPA review for the Washington project was originally anticipated to be completed um by November twenty twenty-one. Uh, but due to pro- prolonged cultural resource activity, um, the NEPA review is not expected to be completed until late spring twenty twenty-two. Uh, CDBG funds allocated towards a project cannot be spent until NEPA process has been completed. And HUD requires entitlement jurisdictions to spend funds within a timely manner and has a timeliness expenditure test that occurs May first every year. So since there's a higher probability that the city will not meet its time in its test in twenty twenty-two with the current projects. Staff is recommending that the funds from the Washington Improvement Infrastructure Project. Be reclassified to the Washington and Broadrick Lighting and Safety Improvement Project. Which will improve safety and driver vis- visibility throughout the Washington and Broadrick neighborhoods by replacing and updating street and traffic lights. This project meets CDBG low, moderate area benefit objective because it will benefit low, low-income resident. Um, of Census Track one-on-one dot zero-one. Uh, the funds will be primarily used for the purchase of materials and installation. And NEPA was completed in February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. So funds can be spent once council approves the reclassification. According to the city citizen participation plan, reclassifying funds requires the city to substantially amend the twenty twenty annual action plan. A thirty-day public comment period was initiated from February fourth, twenty twenty-two through March sixth, twenty twenty-two. And as of today, staff did not receive any public comments. So in conclusion, staff requests the council to open a public hearing to take any comments. And upon closing the public hearing, staff respectfully request the council to vote to approve amendment number two to the CDBG twenty twenty annual action plan. Uh, thank you for your time. Staff is available for questions.
All right, thank you, Isaiah. Um, bring it back to council for any questions or comments. Okay, open it up to public comment. Madam clerk, do we have any requests to speak on this item?
Anybody would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand at this time. I see no hands raised.
All right, close the public comment, bring it back to council. Any comments or questions um or an action request? Um, I'll accept a motion to move.
Go move.
Oh, I'll second.
Oh, it's like, oh no.
Good job, Isaiah. Thank you.
Member Ledesma seconded. Thank you. Um, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Council member Early. Aye. Council member Akala.
Aye.
Council member Ledesma.
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero.
Aye. All right, this item is approved. Thank you, Isaiah. And you're up again. Uh, under our regular agenda, item eighteen, under economic development and housing, is consideration of presentation of the twenty twenty-two annual action plan. All right, Mr. Alfred, let's present again.
Thank you. Can you see my screen?
For the Community Development Block Grant Program. Thank you, yes.
Well, hello again, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Uh, the purpose, the purpose of this presentation is to provide the council. With information regarding the twenty twenty-two annual action plan draft. Uh, after the presentation, staff requests the council provide comments and direction regarding proposed activities for the twenty twenty-two annual action plan draft. Um, as the city, as the council recalls and as reiterated in the previous item. Uh, the Sacramento, the city of West Sacramento became an entitlement jurisdiction for the CDBG program, which enabled the city to receive funding. From the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. A requirement of the CDBG program is to develop a consolidated plan which must occur every five years. In addition to the five-year consolidated plan, the city must develop an annual action plan. Which allocates CDBG funds for activities to achieve the goals of the five-year consolidated plan. The CDBG program is a strict funding source, but allows entitlement jurisdictions to use the money for a wide range of activities. Uh, these activities can be acquisition and rehab of affordable housing. Instruction and rehab of public facilities and public infrastructure. Economic development activities are also eligible for assistance under the CDBG program. Activities can also include homeless, youth and senior programs. And it is important to note that any se- any service activities are capped at fifteen percent of the total allocation for any given year. So the current twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-five consolidated plan was approved by city council in April twenty twenty-one and contains the following goals displayed. Uh, these goals address homelessness, investing in low-income neighborhood by improving infrastructure. And strengthening economic opportunities for small businesses, among others. These goals represent the needs that were identified during the consolidated plan process. However, not all the goals will be achieved nor funded with CDBG funds. Here are some activities that were previously funded using CDBG funds. In twenty sixteen, CDBG funds were used for design improvements. To a section of the Riverwalk Trail which connects the Ice Street Bridge known as North Riverwalk Trail Extension Project. In twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, the city funded the Washington Neighborhood. Sidewalk lighting and landscaping improvement project to improve pedestrian safety. And accessibility as well as address complaints regarding sidewalk improvements for the disabled. The city also committed twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen CDBG allocations. To su- to support the development of an eighty-five permanent supportive housing project. That will specifically target homeless individuals with serious mental illness or those at risk of chronic homelessness. Uh, this project was completed December twenty twenty-one and is now a hundred percent occupied. In fact, the picture that's displayed is the PSH project. Um, in twenty nineteen, sixty thousand dollars was allocated to fund a micro enterprise technical assistance program. For low to moderate income individuals owning or working towards developing a small business in West Sacramento. Um, as of right now, a consultant has been secured to administer the program. And is expected to begin the program in the next couple of weeks. And finally, Fair Housing Services have been funded twenty-one thousand dollars every year of the current and previous consolidated plan. So not all eligible projects are good uses of CDBG funds due to federal regulations and requirements. Staff attempts to be strategic and use CDBG funds on projects that are ready to move forward. And will not expand an undue amount due to federal requirement. But we typically use CDBG funds to leverage other private state and federal funding sources. For example, the PSH project leveraged its CDBG funds to obtain over thirty million dollars in private state and federal funding. So HUD has not yet announced CDBG allocations for this year, but it's likely that the city will receive. An amount similar to its previous year's allocation of five hundred and two thousand five hundred and forty dollars. So here are some potential activities for the twenty twenty-two annual action plan. Uh, for the twenty twenty-two annual action plan, staff is recommending that fifty, fifty percent. Of the funds be allocated to the Washington Neighborhood Sidewalk Lighting and Landscaping Improvement Project. Uh, these funds will help replenish funds. These funds will help replenish prior funds that are reallocated from this activity. This was also recommended from the Economic Development and Housing Department. I'm sorry, the Economic Development and Housing Commission. Additionally, staff is recommending that fifteen percent of the funds. Be allocated to the new Washington and Broadrick Lighting and Safety Project. And another fifty, fifteen percent of the funds for supportive services for the Home Key Program. And the remaining twenty percent will be used for program administration activities. As well as fair housing services. Counseling services to residents of the West Sacramento neighborhood. Both the Economic Development and Housing Commission and the Parks Recreation. And Intergenerational Services Commission recommended approval of these allocations. So this is the schedule that staff has been following for adoption of the twenty twenty-two annual action plan. Staff has held presentations before. The EDH Commission and Parks Commission earlier this year. To solicit comments. And with recommendations received from both commissions, staff formulated. The twenty twenty-two annual action plan draft. We made that draft available for the thirty-day public comment period. As it is right now. And staff plans to return to the city council with the final draft of the annual action plan for adoption in April. So this concludes my presentation. Staff requests the council to provide comments on potential activities for the twenty twenty-two CDBG funding. Thank you for your time and staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Isaiah, for the thorough presentation. Councilmember, I'll call you. Have your hand up already.
Thank you. I just had just some clarification here. The one thousand five hundred eighth General Administration Planning. Is that? For salaries? What is that for?
Yeah, so a portion of it is for salaries. It, it helps fund. The CDBG administrative salary. CDBG administration salary as well as. Funds allocated towards fair housing services.
So, so is that, is, that's not city staffs, though? That's. Different staffs, am I correct?
Raul, if you're available.
I can step in too.
Okay, thank you.
I can clarify.
He did some clarification. Thank you.
The, the, go ahead, Raul. He's here.
Yeah, no, thank you. Sorry about that. I had some problems with my camera. Yeah, the general administration does pay for staff, but it also pays for consultants. Especially for things such as the NEPA process that we can't do internally. We hire a consultant to help us with NEPA. And generally, that is paid out of the general administration. But it is for, primarily for staff to administer the CDBG program. And initially for some of the project managers that oversee these, these activities.
And I'll just add that CDBG is very much administrative. Administratively intense, I'll say. It's often the case in, in cities that are entitlement cities, they have someone dedicated to do the CDBG program. I'm guessing that Isaiah is our primary for that. So in this case, the CDBG admin funds are part of the Economic Development Housing Department's budget. And they support the administration of the overall program and the other activities that Raul mentioned.
Okay, and my second question was, it's for low-income neighborhoods. And I know we have low-income neighborhoods in the north that have been trying to, many of the residents want pools for their children. Could any of those? Funds be used for? For the pool? And the reason I mention that is a pool is an alternative to not having air-conditioned homes. To not having, you know, physical outfits for a lot of the kids around here that. Maybe can't afford, you know, expensive soccer uniforms or. You understand what I'm saying? So that is my question. Would, could any of that be used for the pool funding?
So generally, the CDBG program or CDBG funds can be used. For public facilities, for rehabilitation, reconstruction of public facilities. However, my, my understanding is that there is no definitive timeline for the Bright Park improvements. And I'm assuming that you're, you're talking about the Bright Park Pool that is being proposed. So because there is no definitive timeline, we would not recommend that we. Allocate any current CDBG funds for that activity. You know, that, that may change as, as the project is able to. Narrow a timeline. But generally speaking, yes, CDBG funds can be used for public facilities. We would still have to determine whether the, the activity itself is eligible. As you may recall, anything with CDBG funds. Has to meet a national objective. And we have to be able to show. That it's serving primarily low and moderate income persons. So that's something that we would have to consider if, if we're to look at CDBG funding in the future for that activity.
And if I could just add, I think in terms of the timeline that, that Raul mentioned, we, we, we do have. The Bright Park Master Plan. We are well into budgeting and allocating funding to implement that plan. The council's been very involved in that process, of course. I think the concern with, with, this is a one-year CDBG plan. In terms of how we're going to expend the money and meet the expenditure requirements in, in this coming fiscal year. And so that's, that's really the issue with looking at.
You can't build the pool within the year.
Well, exactly, or.
I think that's, I just wanna.
Anything else at the park.
Super easy.
Right.
Yeah, so I think.
It doesn't fit the timeline.
What we're, what we're doing, as Raul described, will be looking at Bright Park and the improvements. That are planned within it or CDBG eligibility going forward. Because if, if the park is eligible, it absolutely would be a, a, a good source to look to. To help fund future improvements. But for this, this year's annual action or annual plan. We don't have something that could be expended in it, in the park during that time. That's really.
Yeah, especially since it's in, in phase eight, even those, you know, you, you. You know, my feelings on it, it should be actually phased in much earlier and a lot of community.
Uh, uh, Councilmember Early, can we just let Councilmember call with finish?
Yeah, I'll raise my hand.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilmember Paul.
Okay. Anyway, but anyway, Aaron. That's just. That's just what. I was asking because I know we've talked about maybe. Looking at maybe changing some of that phasing around. So, but I do understand what you're saying and. You know. That answered my question. Thank you.
Yeah, and then just to clarify, I, my answer was not just about the, the pool plan at Bright Park. It's more about the park, the whole park. We are, we are well into planning out the next phases. We're looking at the phasing program based on the council's direction. We're building out the budget more precisely. We'll have future council actions that are going to be proposed to actually go. And get design consultants on board to, you know, get to a point of, of planning with the park where we can tell you exactly. What will cost for the, the whole thing versus different phases. So the point of all that is to say that we're, we're well into working on implementing the master plan. But for the first, I'm sorry, for this year of CDBG. We wouldn't be able to meet the expenditure deadline. With anything at the park, assuming it was eligible and all the other things were checked off. So hopefully that helps.
Understand. Timeline.
Can I just? Councilmember Early, go ahead.
Just, just with my hand, I, I always like to just make sure we're like, we're super clear, just for the public and, and for ourselves. And, and I think to, to Norma, to your point, even if. We move the, the pull-up to phase three, which I think is where we're currently at in the phases, phase three. Isn't going to happen this year. Right? So even if, right, we, we took it from phase eight or nine, I think it actually might be. Phase nine, but even if we took it all the way up to phase three. It couldn't happen in the next year. I just, I want like plain English. Okay, right, because of what I would hate is then, like, next meeting, we get in the public, like, you need to raise it to the next phase, right? It's like, that's not fair to, so I want to make sure that we're very plain and, and simple.
Yeah, again, for purposes of. Right, for tonight, it would not be feasible to include it in, in this year's plan for the.
No matter what phase it was in.
Right, but we will, as part of our longer-term strategy with park, look to CDBG to see, to inform the council. Is it an eligible source? How can it plug into the plan? As we put the overall budget and plan together for, you know, every phase in the park.
And it's a five hundred thousand dollars, correct?
Raul.
We, we have yet to receive the actual allocation for twenty twenty-two. But generally, the, the allocation will follow very similar to what we received last year. And last year, the allocation was five hundred and two thousand five hundred and forty dollars, if I'm looking at the. Isaiah's slide correctly. So it'll be around that same amount.
Okay, so I'm going to round to five hundred, just for simple, for me, for simple math. If we, in the future, wanted to include it as part of our Bright, Bright Park. Investment, would we be confined to having to spend it within? That next fiscal year, or could we lump funds across years?
It would be, it would be difficult to lump. Funds in multiple years.
Okay.
Only if, if we know that we're going to have a lot of expenditures. That's, as Isaiah mentioned. CDBG has a timely expenditure test every year. And we can't have more than one and a half percent of our. Allocation for any given year. If we don't meet that timely expenditure test, then we are put on the naughty list for CDBG. And could risk future reductions of our CDBG fund. And, and that's why we, we're always very careful to try to. Collect activities. That are pretty shovel-ready, that we know are going to be able to spend funds very quickly. So that we don't find in that, ourselves in that situation.
But Raul, by being shovel-ready, does that also mean it has to be completed in that year, or it just has to be started in that year?
Correct, it just has to be started, not completed. And, and what I meant is that we can spend our CDBG funds fairly quick. But no, it doesn't, it does not have to be completed.
Yeah, the money.
Thank you. Norma, thank you for your patience and letting me just jump in like that.
I was gonna say, it's okay because that actually, that's what I was gonna ask. So Aaron, the money has to be spent in that year.
Right, it's, it's an expenditure deadline, not necessarily a, a project completion deadline, right, Raul? Yes, okay.
All right.
All right, thank you. I do have a couple of questions. Do you, under the Washington Neighborhood Sidewalk, it's about fifty percent going in there. Do you anticipate any delays, any supply chain delays or anything that? I know, and I know with our West Capitol Avenue, we've had some delays. Associated with that. Do you anticipate anything like that at this point?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe that Joanna or Dees from Capital Projects and Transportation is with us tonight as well, and, and I think she can probably. Better respond to that question. As you know, that we've had some issues with, I think, all of our activities, so that may be. A scenario that we may find ourselves in. I know that the delay for that project has been primarily the, the NEPA review process, which we are now finally. Moving forward and expecting to be completing in mid-May. So with that, you know, we will have an entire year to make sure that we spend. Whatever funding we allocate to that activity. So we should have sufficient time. Even if there are some delays to, to spend that money.
Okay, good. I'm glad to hear that. And under general administration and planning. It. You know, I, I had a constituent approach me over the weekend. She's finding. She works for VIA. She lives in a trailer. She would like to have stable housing, but courses employed. Probably meets a threshold that may not qualify for our project room key or home key. And that's where she would like to be placed. So her comment to me was, you know, there is, there is no place for me to figure out. It's not, I mean, it's just really hard for me to figure out. How to connect with somebody who can help me find housing. So, you know, she is, she is well-connected with Mark Sawyer. It just seemed she's not been able to get the housing she needs. So, you know, that, that's just an example. That's one example. That's one question. Another question is another resident who complains that we don't support her enough. For her. You know, her ADU. She wants, you know, payment for her connections. Of course, we, we're not. In the business of paying for those things because it's cost prohibitive. But even alone. And just, you know, I, I have shared with Aaron about that one a little bit. And I think you might be aware of, of the constituent, and she was really tracking our housing element plan to see if. You know, support for ADU, and she did connect with somebody at the state. And I was wondering. Are, is. Is this resource able to provide support for those individuals who are looking to find stable housing?
Thank you, yeah. So we, we don't have any active programs. That can specifically help with those two scenarios. We have obviously committed CDBG funds in the past for the Home Key Program. Part of the, the acquisition funds for the roadway in came from CDBG. But as we all know, there's, there's a significant need. Having said that, we don't have any active programs for, say, rental assistance, at least any local programs. Or, or tenant-based rental assistance. CDBG funds are generally not. Meant to be for payment of fees. Building permit fees or things of that nature. They're primarily meant to be to support. Development of affordable housing. To support owner-occupied rehabilitation. To support microenterprises, those types of activities. But we, again, unfortunately, we don't have any specific programs in place. That can directly help those two constituents.
I see. So the. So as far as providing counseling services. We don't have any, I, I know, I know I refer people to you, and you do go ahead and help them out on your own. But we don't have anything formal as far as a program, as, or a resource we can post on our website to say that. We need housing. Here's who you connect with.
So we, you know, when we do get a call or, or an email from, from a resident. We do try to connect them with the resources that we have available. We don't have a specific counseling services or service. The service that Isaiah mentioned that is paid out of our. General administration is for fair housing. And that is specifically when, when residents are having tenant landlord issues, for example. Or if somebody feels that they are being discriminated. We, because we are receiving federal funds, we are required to provide fair housing services. We can either do it internally. Or we can have, you know, a consultant do that for us. Unfortunately, we don't have the expertise in-house. To be on top of all of the laws and, and regulations regarding fair housing. So we do hire a consultant to provide those services to our residents. But it is limited to fair housing issues.
I see.
Not necessarily for helping them navigate and find. Resources to, to, to find housing.
Well, then, thank you for taking the referrals. Helping people find housing. So that's, that's helpful to know. Okay. Any other questions among councilmembers? Okay, do you need? Proposed activities? I think at this point, do you have enough staff to, is staff having enough direction from council?
Yes, I believe we do, again, and, and ultimately, you know, the intent of tonight's presentation is to get an idea of whether we are. Going in the right direction. As Isaiah mentioned, we're going to be back. In April for the final draft and for adoption of this draft to, to HUD. Before we do that, we want to make sure that we run these by, by council to make sure that we are. Again, achieving the goals that the council approved in our five-year consolidated plan, which is ultimately what we are trying to do.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much for all your work on, on this, through the entire team. I know it's a lot of work and appreciate it very much. All right, next item is item nineteen, Council Communications. Are there any updates among the councilmembers? No meetings, cobb. Councilmember Ledesma.
Yeah, it's a quick one from last Monday. We had a meeting of the Yellow County Transportation District. It was this past Monday, fourteenth. Just really got an update on a couple of things at the, at the, from the administrative board. Looking at some long-range planning calendars, and then we are starting to resume some previously, previously suspended routes. Around Davis, around Davis with. previously suspended routes around Davis um around Davis with uh unit trans coming back. So really, uh also, we did have a a discussion and looking towards a reserve policy, which we haven't had. So uh against some financial updates for from the board. So that's all I have.
And Saicog, transportation?
Actually, yes, I'll I'll report out uh secondly on that offline. So yeah, I'm sorry to have that. So that was last uh Thursday. So I'll follow up with the offline on that.
Okay, no problem. Thank you. And um or on so no, no other. Okay, so on uh for me, March ninth, our um city's uh transportation team working on the uh Ice Street Bridge and the um Ice Street Deck Conversion. Together with the SAC City team, Mayor Steinberg and myself met with the US Department of Transportation team to discuss our, you know, share our plans for the Ice Street Bridge and the deck conversion. Um I just had to have to say that uh the Department of Transportation provided some positive feedback. Uh they they liked our plans and our project and um were giving us some ideas on various funding opportunities um to elevate our projects for funding. And so just very appreciative of that, wanted you to be aware. And on my uh March tenth, Saicog Bike Share Policy Steering Committee met. And so we're in the process of listening to um various guest speakers and um you know, places around, you know, a- around, you know, just the um like around the state and other states, um learning about various new trends. And so it'd be the bicycle that line, you know, um sharing that we have with SAC City. Uh and uh it includes city council members um and uh, you know, air quality district members. Um so the both of all of us with Saicog are trying to get a better sense as to what works best. You know, to either keep um the scooter or to move on from the scooter and just keep the bicycles. And it is a very interesting process, learning on, you know, what what are the best approaches to moving um into the bike share? You know, momentum. So um we'll continue those conversations and and I'll bring any, if you have any suggestions. Staff is is very much involved um in in the discussions as well. I know they're, I know they're listening. Um but you know, if you have any thoughts or suggestions, I know all of you in one way or another have an interest in this area. Um, all right, so with that, um we don't have any appointments um for any vacancies. We do have a vacancy. I did receive um a notification that there is a vacancy, I think, in the Arts um Intergenerational and um Culture Commission. And so look forward to hearing uh whether we're gonna be opening up that commission for additional applications. Um Aaron, are you gonna, are we gonna use the existing applications?
I don't have an answer for you on that right now unless um the city clerk or Amanda want to chime in, but I uh will have to get back to you on that if not.
That's fine. Thank you.
We are opening the position, Madam Mayor, um and I don't have any applications on file right now.
Okay, thank you. All right, and city manager report back on, Aaron.
Oh, actually, council calendar first?
Oh, sorry, council calendar.
Excuse me. Um just a reminder that this Friday is the uh West Sack Play Check Presentation at Summerfield Park. Um and that starts at ten AM. And then on Saturday, um the Police Department is having their annual awards ceremony, and that's gonna be at Spring Hill Suites, and that starts at five thirty.
That's right. It's at Spring Hill Suites. I thought it was Drake's. Okay, thank you for that reminder. Um and uh and also, West Sack Little League is gonna be opening up. There's nothing official happening there, but for the softball, um the girls softball, they will. They do like council members there if at all possible. So thank you for for that reminder. All right, city managers report.
Yeah, first games on Saturday. Oh, my son's as well. Um yeah, so I I I just have one uh announcement I wanted to make that I uh actually made to employees today. Um and then the story starts with, uh believe it or not, uh two years ago to this day is when we shut down City Hall um to the public and we we uh suspended a lot of city services and uh sent everyone home that was uh working in most of our um office environment. It's hard to believe that was that was a full two years ago. Uh we had been working on a plan to bring employees back on a hybrid schedule, um as most of the world is right now, trying to figure that out. Um we had a a plan that we put together that we approved um department by department, um hybrid schedules for different employees. And uh we had to put that on hold back in the the summertime, uh first because of the Delta variant, and we held off longer because of the Omicron variant. But we're at a point now where we're revisiting that policy. Um I actually announced today that um on April twenty-fifth, which is a Monday. Um it's, I think it's a week after the spring break uh for Washington Unified. Um that's when we're gonna uh bring employees back on those modified schedules. Um so as of April twenty-fifth, um staff working in City Hall and uh some of the other office buildings, if they're not already back uh working in person, um they'll they'll move to a hybrid schedule. Uh most people are doing uh between three and four days um in the office, the the rest of the time working remotely at home um as they've been doing. So this is a major uh shift for the organization, but I think uh one that's uh both appropriate and necessary to um, you know, it's 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 never gonna be normal again. We've been talking a lot about it at our exec team level. Um it's a new normal and we need to adapt to it. So I just wanted to share that. Um there there that doesn't necessarily mean that every city service that was available on March fifteenth, twenty twenty is gonna be immediately restored um on April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. Uh some things are gonna be phased in a little bit, uh but we'll definitely keep the council informed. Uh the ones that affect the public probably the most are uh things like counter services and community development. Uh we've been working on an appointment basis and we're we're likely to continue um that kind of model for a while. But um each department head who has responsibility over those types of services is working with their team um on a plan. I'm kind of giving them the uh deferring to them on on uh what makes sense. But as of the twenty-fifth, we will be um starting our modified schedules um and having uh people working at at our buildings more uh uh regularly. So just wanted to share that. Um and of course, the the one of the related talks that is looking at um returning to uh in-person mission and council meetings. Um I know I've I've talked to uh you individually about that. I'll continue to do that. We don't have any announcements to make there tonight. But but it is something that we're uh looking ahead uh to and 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 trying to sort out. So uh we're to come on that part. So thank you.
Thank you. Um city attorney report?
Nothing to report tonight.
All right, and uh future agenda item request by council. Um I don't see anything attached, but I did um ask our city manager uh to include a future agenda item, um which is uh reading into the beginning of the council um calendar, and we hope he'll um hopefully share it, an email that I received uh as far as the Native American land. Um just showing that, you know, we are recognizing the Native Americans' presence here and on the city. So, you know, I will um hopefully see that in the agenda in the future. Council member early, yes?
Um I just want to make sure I'm understanding, um Madam Mayor, are you are you saying just having a land acknowledgement?
Land acknowledgement.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Um and so it wouldn't just be on one agenda. It wouldn't be just as one agenda item. We would we would do it at on every city council meeting?
That's the request in the, that's a request for a future agenda item. I don't know if we need to talk about it, but.
Yeah, I'll just say on that particular one, um there is a portion of the municipal code that has the kind of the 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 items to be included um in council meetings. So we're we're gonna take that request and look at it in that context. Um and just give us a little bit of time to do that, and we'll uh follow up the council to um see if if you want to bring it back for uh future agenda. So uh that that's a slight difference with that one, because it would require, I believe it would require a code amendment, but um it's definitely something we can do.
Just, Aaron, just last question on this one. At code amendment because of our West Sacramento codes?
I mean, I don't want to get too technical about that. It's just something we need to, we need to look at, because in our in our code, we do have a listing of the things.
Cool, Aaron. I'm gonna put myself on mute.
Yeah, no, no, it's it's just, it's just we want to make sure we get that part right. So we'll uh we'll look at that. We'll um I'll I'll talk to you individually about it. Um the best way to do it. So thanks.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I'll accept the um um motion to adjourn.
So move.
Okay.
All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Council member early?
Aye.
Council member Akala?
Aye.
Council member Ledesma?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
And with that, we are adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Aye.